We're convening Jefferson County Commission Evening Meeting. It is Thursday, July 17th, and we're going to start with a moment of silence. And I ask folks in the audience to think of our friends and neighbors who are residents of Charles Towers, who are experiencing hardship right now. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now we'll proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will also do the pledge to be, uh, pledge allegiance to the West Virginia flag that's located in your packet. I pledge allegiance to the flag of West Virginia, which serves as a constant reminder that mountaineers are always free, which stands as a symbol of her majestic mountains, fertile forests, rich veins of coal, and the pride of her people. Now for our consent agenda, approval of minutes, July 8th, 2025, special meeting minutes, and meeting minute updates, inclusion of additional attachments from June 5th, 2025. Any objection?
Nope.
Hearing none, those are approved. Approval of accounts payable, any objection to July 10th and July 17th? Hearing none, those are approved. Approval of manual checks, July 10th and July 17th, any objection? Without objection, those are approved. Approval of payroll, July 18th? Without objection, that is approved. Approval of requisitions, July 17th? Without objection, that is approved. Announcements, um, we had, it's a little bit confusing in the agenda. We have three different sets of public comment. One is listed at the end of business. We're going to move that up to the beginning of the meeting like we typically do. But just to clarify, these are different topics. So we had public comment as part of our community discussion. That was on Washington Street Properties. Now we have public comment on anything that's on the agenda, and we will start with that in just a second. Draft minutes are included in the meeting packet. Draft meeting minutes are often also available separately online. You can see both at our website. The URL is listed in the packet. Jefferson County Commission spending syncs with West Virginia Checkbook, wvcheckbook.gov. It syncs daily. A complete list of publicly available information and tutorials on using the site are available online. I've reported that change in the agenda. Any other change to the agenda, county administrator? Hearing none, we will proceed to public comment. First, we have Amanda Stroud. You know the drill. We just did it. We'll do another one.
And we've tested the mic.
And the mic works. Excellent.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'd also, first off, just like to thank, um, whoever was responsible for moving the public comment back to its normal position. Okay. I'd like to give a big round of applause to everyone involved in the cleanup after yesterday's storm, but a special shout out to everyone involved in setting up and maintaining the emergency shelter for displaced Charles Town, Re- Charles Tower residents at the Ransson Civic Center. From the Homeland Security guys, Red Cross, the City of Ransson, the Special Departments and Rec Staff, and WVU Medicine, Chick-fil-A, Independent Fire, Ashbury Methodist Church, Andy's Pizza, Interna Brewery, and anyone who popped in to drop off water and snacks or just check up on things. Now back to my regularly scheduled public comment. The meeting and sessions information page on the county's website says, "The commission will provide an opportunity for public comments at the beginning of each regular meeting." And I continue to hope, I had, I had to make revisions, hope it continues to stay at the beginning. Putting this at the end makes any comments regarding agenda items such as revisiting the home confinement program, going purple, et cetera, a moot point. Also, this undoubtedly deprives the commission of the opportunity to hear issues and concerns they are not currently aware of, or even kudos for that matter. A cynic would view this move as a way to cut the public out of the commission's decision-making. But maybe this move was just a misguided attempt to shorten meetings. However, this year, the average time spent on public comments is only approximately 22 minutes, a drop in the bucket of a five to six hour meeting. Better options to shorten meetings would include cutting down on the number of executive sessions, approval of accounts payable, manual checks, payroll, and especially approvals to hire. Assuming y'all trust the sheriff and the county supervisors and directors to run their departments, why do they have to take time out of their day or not to come before you? This is an inefficient use of everyone's time. Another, excuse me, another suggestion would be to take a serious look at boards and commissions. Think everyone would agree way too much time and drama is being spent on this subject. Perhaps those entities with a director should be responsible for appointing their on-board members, especially if there's already a commission liaison associated with said organization. My two cents worth anyway. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Jaclyn Millar.
Let's do a little reflection, shall we? Members of this commission have suggested that the JCDAs being downsized to save money to the tune of $400,000, thereabouts, the authority's annual budget. It was also stated that this is the cost of an ambulance. At least this commission finally admitted that there is a need for EMS services in the underserved areas it created as it gets advice from spend thriffs. So enjoy your new kicks while our right to paid equitable public safety response is shelved. In the same commentary, a commissioner also discussed the need to bring big businesses for a tax base, yet candidly admitted that he likes tax incentives such as TIFs and pilots for those same big businesses. Let me get this straight. This commission caused a massive capital debt during an operational deficit and now has to find a way to pay for it. Small businesses the JCDAs brought in wasn't cutting the mustard. So this is what the commission sees as fiscally conservative? And some of you have a nerve to call me a rhino. Laughable. If this commission is going to be the big business tax charity, and while we operate in a deficit, how will you actually pay the bills and not dip into capital? Simple, dip into capital long enough to quietly raise taxes through our property assessments. It concerns me that this commission reported that the assets of the former PSD, Jefferson County, belonged to the JCC. This is a false statement. The proof is in the purchase agreement and sale, which does not contain the JCC signatory. Does this commission own the assets of the Harper's Ferry Boulevard PSD? While I'm on this topic, this commission intervened in a legal case due to the complaints, rightly, from American Water ratepayers. Yet you appoint who a utility PSD board that has higher sewer rates than that of American Water without complaint. For those of you not up to speed on the territory dispute case, it looks like American Water proposed a pretty good deal to the developer to run a pipe to Cave Quarter area where it is in the vicinity and ironically, an area where American Water just purchased three wells in 2023. Isn't that curious? So I guess this public, the public is supposed to enjoy these new buildings, which we will require, which will require you to tap into capital to pay for the bills for the next few years. While you call us lazy, increase our taxes, not answer FOIAs, break your own rules, erase historical records, reduce free speech, object to ordinances protecting children, while you preach to your appointees about loyalty and fidelity to your positive image. Proof's in the pudding.
Mr. Tab.
David Tab, Jefferson County, lifelong resident, with the following comments. There's no bulletin board outside the 393 North Lawrence Street facility posted in the agenda for this meeting. You're in violation of West Virginia Code 732. How did I know that? Because I took y'all to court earlier. Uh-oh. I was here at seven o'clock this morning, making sure. Posted at the courthouse, posted at the old county commission meeting. Not here. It's required everywhere. Uh-oh. You did it again. So you're putting everything that you're doing tonight in jeopardy. You've gotten away with it before, so why don't you just go ahead and do it again? This is really what you guys are all about. Another point that I think is real important, that now that I have a few more people here, why didn't Mr. Tab stand up and pledge to the flag of West Virginia? Because I had sanctions put on by the Jefferson County Commission as if I was an attorney. And stop me. Has it worked out yet? I think I'm still doing pretty good. I am not free, and you're the cause of it. Just remember that the rest of the people that's in here, when you make a decision, like purchasing these buildings without us knowing about it. So are you going to put the whole agenda in jeopardy, or are you going to just go on like you normally do? Agenda five, going purple, maybe this current county commission needs to be the first ones to be checked out. You really ought to look at it. The agenda pack after agenda eight have the wrong numbers coded. They don't match the agenda pack. You really ought to take a look at this stuff and proofread it a little bit more. You changed it three times. You guys are supposed to be doing better than that. No, y'all wanted to put our show on today and make it all happen. This meeting should have started at six o'clock. Why did you double dump on two important things? The Washington Street project and a county commission meeting where you're spending millions of dollars. Please do better. I beg you. I shouldn't have to get up here and tell y'all what y'all are doing wrong, because you don't listen. So y'all have a nice day and take me off of any other stuff. I gotta go home and take care of my wife who has gotten ill. Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Councilmember Elizabeth Ricketts. Thank you so much for being here, ma'am.
Commissioners, Elizabeth Ricketts of the City of Charlestown. First of all, I found it very misleading that you listed your public comment at the end of your four-page agenda, especially since having the public comment at the end would have gone against your own posted policy for public comment, which is to hold it at the beginning. Obviously, you have the right to amend your agenda, and you did, and you moved public comment to the beginning, which again, I think is misleading to the public. I think more people would have presented public comment at this meeting had they not thought they had to be here at 4:55 to sign up early for public comment that may not have occurred until after 10 o'clock. Additionally, I do not see how you this evening can, in good consciousness, have an agenda item such as number three move forward. Mr. Majdi acts as one member of the Jefferson County Development Authority Board comprised of 15 members per the 2012 bylaws. How can one member of a board present resolutions that represent an entire entity, an entity that had all board members removed just last week, without cause and without proper notice on your agenda? I was one of the members removed from the JCDAs. I and many members feel that this was an unjust action. I feel the excuses given are only going to backfire on you because you keep changing your story. So I think you should just come out and say what it is you're trying to do, and I think, frankly, that these two resolutions in your packet of night make that very clear to the public. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And our next speaker is Dr. Christine Wymer.
Commissioners, thank you for having us again this evening, again, thank you for having us this evening. Um, I'd like to reiterate the sentiments of the other speakers who thanked you for moving public comment to the beginning of the meeting. I would also like to point out that the order of the agenda matters. This may have totally been on accident. And if that's the case, to understand accidents happen. I would just say, from my personal experience, I talked to quite a few members of the public before this evening who decided not to come this evening and give public comment and instead watch from home or not attend the meeting because they couldn't stay till the end. Um, that's understandable. So it does have a chilling effect on people giving public comments. We hope that's fixed. Also, we hope that transparency in the future about signing up for public comment. Thank you for having the public comment out to the beginning of the regular meeting so people could sign up for a public comment. Just wasn't clear that that was going to happen, so people thought they had to sign up at like 4:59 to speak again later. So maybe some clarifications, probably wasn't obvious to you that the members of the public needed to know that. In my previous comments, I just wanted to put some context on them because Commissioner Majdi mentioned after I left that we were supposed to be speaking about the George Street Buildings. I was speaking about the George Street Buildings. I think it's important for people to know what is happening. The only way for them to know what a board member from a board is going to talk about is if that board authorizes them to do so, or if the staff of that board. And so by attending those meetings, they can see the authorization, they know what's going to be spoken about, and they can give intelligent comment. It helps the public help you govern us. And finally, I'd like to speak on the JCDAs. We are very concerned about what recently occurred with the JCDAs. We believe that the agenda did not adequately tell the public what was going, that that was going to happen. Seems like an Open Meetings Act violation. The changes in the bylaws that were made, um, do not seem, you do not seem to have the authority under 712-7A. Only the JCDAs has the ability to change its own bylaws, the authority to change its own bylaws. Again, what is the reason? We've sought out, we know you've done many interviews, and we appreciate you sharing that information with the public. One of the reasons was given was that there's a new law, but that is inaccurate. There is not a new law. There is the same law, 712. It's been there for a long time, decades, and it's been changed many times. It's not a new law. It's just been amended as laws are, and it ha, and that has happened many times over the decades, and never has the JCDAs been all the members removed and, and reappointed. So the public really wants to understand why this is happening. We actually hope that you change your mind and reappoint the old members. And now, further concerning, it seems that the JCC is passing resolutions on behalf of the JCDAs.
Thank you. Your general ladies' time has expired, and our next speaker is William Kinley.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come out here tonight. My hopes are up here to talk to you all about the probate system and how unjust and broken it is here in Jefferson County, and hopes that you revamp it, rethink it, figure it out somehow where it's actually not broken. Uh, I'm not going to mention any names this evening, but I will say that I am appalled by the way I've been treated by the members of the current probate system. I've been lied to, I've been stolen from, and at every turn, somebody's passing a buck or ignoring mine or my brother's pleas for justice. I had believed that the, in the United States, being an American, meant that there is justice. I haven't seen any of that in Jefferson County. The system is broken, borderline on criminal. Speaking of, the fiduciary system is so slanted and corrupt that we have requested several times to do away with the fiduciary officer regarding our case. While that person is appointed by the clerks, they cannot be removed by the clerks? That don't seem right to me. The clerks have been told to not respond to any of our emails anymore. Um, now, I haven't sent a whole lot of them, but my brother has. I went in there to the office myself and heard her tell me directly, "Do not, we do not respond to any of your emails." The other clerk said, "That's not the case." So I'm being lied to. This is not how a justice system's supposed to work. I mean, I'm, uh, every turn, I'm told, "Get a lawyer," you know, and I can't afford a lawyer. Um, matter of fact, why should I pay for a lawyer when I'm already paying for a third of a lawyer that my brother's using against me? We've spoken with and informed so many people, including lawyers, judges, county clerks, fiduciary officers, and any el, anybody else that would listen, but nobody will address the fact that me and my brother are being stolen from, lied to, and held in limbo. I feel that it, that the, uh, is, I feel that, uh, they should be held as accessories of theft, uh, in multiple entities, because they have, they've been aware of the theft going on and ongoing. None have acted in good faith regarding this case. Only one person actually tried to help me, and they provided me advice to come see you. And I, I appreciate that from her. But if, if you are inclined to see any kind of justice done, please notify me. I'll, I'm, I'll feature back and call anytime, 24/7.
Sorry, your time has expired, but if you could provide that contact info. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ross Morgan.
My name is Ross Almorgan. First, I'd like to thrill all's undivided attention. Chief of Shepherdstown Fire Department. On April the 6th of 25, I sent a CAD support ticket to the Communications Center regarding some discrepancies of times with two different incidents. Then on April 25 of 2025, in not receiving any answer yet, I then resubmitted the same ticket, and the only response I got from the Communications Director was "received," which was on April 28th. So on May the 11th of 25, I then emailed all five of you commissioners, the administrator, and the communications director. In that email, I explained to all of you my frustrations and the fact that it has been 25 business days since I submitted this CAD support ticket with no response. But what is more upsetting is the fact that in the same email to all of you, the last sentence I read, I wrote was, read as follows, "I would appreciate a response from each one of you to at least say that you received this email." But not one of you, not one commissioner, not one administrator, had a common decency to acknowledge me. I cannot prove that you received an email, but I do find it very strange that all of you had the same email server or address as the communications director's, and he was the only one to respond the following day on May 12th. And his response to that email was, quote, "We did the investigation. I have been crafting a response, but there have been many higher priority issues occurring at the ECC that require my attention. I did advise Chief Morgan that information. We will provide him a response." That was a bold-faced lie. Jeff Pozinski has not advised me of anything regarding this CAD ticket, nor has he had any correspondence with me by email, phone, text, or in person. Then the part where he states he was crafting a response, why can't he just simply explain the truth and what went wrong? Now today, Thursday, July 17th, has been at least 70 business days, and still no response. This is not the first time this type of incident has happened of the no response. On February 10th to 24th, I submitted a CAD ticket. My response was received in March of '24, and the ticket said, "Ticket closed." The same thing happened again in July of '24. Same day, I got a response, and it said, "Ticket closed." There was no explanation, no nothing, just ticket closed, and they were both from Jeff Pozinski. Now tonight, my first thought of what to say to all of you all was just forget about this whole thing and shuttle where the sun don't shine, but I thought twice about it. I still want the CAD support ticket answered.
Sorry, your time has expired.
And I want it by the end to close business on Monday, July 25th.
Thank you so much. And also, I just know, I, I am not familiar with those emails. Uh, if we're having trouble with email, my phone number is 304-306-0997, and you can communicate with me that way if that helps. We're going to start with new business on our regular agenda. Uh, we are, our first agenda item is a public hearing, a zoning map amendment petition for Hoxton Center. And if we can start with the staff report, do we need a break?
I have to recuse myself.
Oh, recusal, okay. Commissioner Keys is recusing herself, and we'll begin with the staff report.
Hey, Eddie. Eddie, do we have an extension cord here somewhere? Thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here in regards to the Hoxton Center zoning map amendment. It was before your board, at which point you scheduled today's public hearing, as well as forwarded to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation on whether it not, whether or not it is in accordance with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. I did want to mention the fact that on one of the original drafts of the agenda, it was mistakenly labeled as a different zoning district that was actually being requested by the applicants. As you can see in the handouts before you, this is the application for this Hoxton Center rezoning. It is for general commercial. The parcel is south of Shepherdstown. It is on 1.07 acres, and I wanted to, and I'm on here today on behalf of the Planning Commission to communicate both their findings, as well as three crucial parts that you can also find within your agenda packet and staff memo. Principally, on our future land use guide, which is found in the Comprehensive Plan, you will see that the parcel is designated as office or commercial. You can find the description for that land use designation as well in your agenda packets. It is, and this is a, a little bit of a tricky point, so stick with me here for a second. It is located within the Growth Management Boundary of Shepherdstown. However, the plan also speaks to the fact that the GMV, Growth Management Boundary, is not considered a preferred growth area. A preferred growth area is where we have predicted to see higher intensity developments, such as a general commercial zoning, uh, change, or zoning map change, I should say. And as a third point to this, the parcel does have access to the infrastructure. You can see both in your packet, it's access to roads, water, and sewer, all coming from the Shepherdstown area. So with these conclusions and facts in mind, I'd like to mention the fact that the Planning Commission found that this zoning map amendment was consistent with the comprehensive, with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, and they voted unanimously on July 8th for that finding. As a final note, I wanted to mention that a zoning is not project specific. It carries with the land, of course, as you know, but the request here, I will let the applicant speak to, and I believe they are speaking after me, so I'll buy the public hearing. I'm happy to answer any questions. I can also come back with any questions later.
Any preliminary questions from the commission? If not, we'll hear from applicant. Thank you.
Come on down. Thank you. We don't have receptables up here for our computers, and our batteries are dying, so sorry about that. We're ready when you are. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, commission members, staff, council. Uh, I'm here tonight representing the Hoxton Center LLC. My name's Paul Rocco. I'm a local land use consultant. To my left is Rob Hoxton with Hoxton Center LLC, and to my right is Clay Hoxton with Hoxton Center LLC. The Hoxtons have owned this property since 1990, and if you're familiar with it, leading into Shepherdstown, it is the property just outside Shepherdstown on Route 230, has the turret on the end of it, and has long been office building. Across the street, to get more perspective, is the entrance to the Morgan Academy, so to give you an idea of where you, where you are in the county. Uh, the primary, the primary purpose of, of this rezoning is, since it has a longtime existing commercial use, is to free up, uh, for, for possibly some expansion, uh, and, and these times, banks prefer that properties are zoned correctly. The primary, uh, reason for rezoning in terms of compatibility with the Comprehensive Plan is if whether or not it is consistent with the plan and, uh, on the future land use map for the zone that you're, you're seeking. Uh, in this case, as your staff mentioned, Luke mentioned, uh, the property is, is in the Shepherdstown Urban Growth Boundary, which is called the Growth Management Boundary. Uh, it's, it's technically no different by state code as the Charlestown Growth Boundary, Urban Growth Boundary. growth boundary, and the ransom urban growth boundary. They just call theirs differently in Shepherdstown, but it is adopted by you with the recommendation of the municipality as an urban growth boundary section of the state code. In, in this case, the building was constructed back in the mid to late 1940s. It was originally constructed as a restaurant lounge. A lot of my, my research has been anecdotal and looking in assessor records, but it, it was service-oriented for many years, being in that resident, restaurant and service type of commercial for many years, until it became a transformation into retail space and office space. The facility was renovated in 1988, right about the same time the zoning was adopted, and purchased, as I said, shortly thereafter by the Hoxtons, which are generational owners around the Shepherdstown area. Have to give you a little bit of a history lesson, a brief since you've already been here quite some time. When zoning was originally adopted in Jefferson County in 1988, it was adopted as a non-traditional zoning ordinance. We didn't do the first step of a typical traditional zoning ordinance study when that, when we were working on that zoning ordinance. A traditional zoning ordinance, you would do a survey of the county for all of the existing uses, and then you would fit those zones around those uses, and, and have a lot more zones than you did when you did the original zoning ordinance in 1988. There was three zones. If you're familiar with the metropolitan area, there are many more than three zones in a traditional zoning ordinance governed community. Throughout the years, a couple zones were added, including during the last comprehensive plan and this comprehensive plan, but no one ever went back and did that survey to try to fit a lot of these long-existing uses into a correct zone. So when that transition from non-traditional to traditional took place after the 2015 comprehensive plan, many of these properties probably should have been surveyed to look at, to see if there should be zoning changes around these properties. This is one of those properties that I consider to have been mislabeled for many years, once that traditional zoning classification happened after the 2015 comprehensive plan, since it was used quite some time as commercial and office space, and, and never anything but those commercial spaces. It is served by sewer and water. Sewer and water comes out past, past the area, and, which is one of the main reasons in the comprehensive plan that is, you're to look at to determine if a, if a property is right for rezoning. The primary purpose or primary justification is location on the future land use map. In this case, the future land use map has, shows it as commercial and office. And that's, that's your latest one, 2025. 2015, it also listed it as commercial. So it's long been recognized as a future land use, as well as the fact that it long existed as a commercial use. As Luke stated, the planning commission recommended that it is certainly consistent with the comprehensive plan. The first thing you look at is the future land use map, that there are some other objectives and goals in the comprehensive plan that I, I need to mention. There's objective 2.1 and 12.1 in your comprehensive plan that heavily encourages the use and reuse of existing commercial structures, and to allow these existing businesses to expand and flourish. Now, in order to meet those objectives in your comprehensive plan, it needs to be rezoned so that they can have an opportunity to expand and flourish. Objective 2.4 in the comprehensive plan encourages the expansion of commercial growth where sewer and water is located. Goal 13 is, states that you should develop an environment that promotes existing and new businesses the ability to expand. Objectives 13.3 states that you should provide incentives for existing commercial businesses to flourish and expand. Section 13.4 encourages the development and improvement of the infrastructure where existing commercials exist. And one, one section of the zoning ordinance, it's almost in reverse of the idea of it consistent with the comprehensive plan to general commercial. If you look under section 5.12 of the zoning ordinance, it's the provisions for general commercial. It states in there that this zone is only really supposed to be used where the future land use map or guide in the most recently adopted comprehensive plan shows it as commercial or office. So not only does it meet the future land use guide, but it also meets at least those six goals and objectives that are found in the narrative of your comprehensive plan. The requirement in the ordinance asks for a conversation on change of neighborhood from when the original zoning ordinance was adopted. You'll find that in, in, in the packet that I submitted to you. It, it's hard because it, it asked for since the beginning of zoning, which is 1988. So you'll find that a lot of things in there in terms of change of neighborhood may not be recent, but again, your ordinance asks for changes since 1988. It also asks for changes in transportation characteristics or patterns. In this particular property, the probably the biggest change in transportation characteristic that took place since the beginning of zoning would be the expansion of Route 9 and the four lane. And, and that may seem further away from this property, but in that case, it changed the dynamics of traffic coming between Charlestown and Shepherdstown. You, you went up Flowing Springs Road, 17 and 230. And now that the four lane was expanded to Martinsburg, a lot of that traffic that would be going to Shepherdstown decided to take the four lane to, to 480 and come in Shepherdstown that way. The other change in transportation characteristic is, of course, the, what's been termed as the bypass around Shepherdstown, but it's the Route 45 connector where Potomac Landscaping is and Mulch Company. That's, that's all I have, just a request that it be determined as consistent with the comprehensive plan, or agree that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, as the planning commission has made that recommendation to you to go from rural to general commercial for the 1.07 acre parcel. I'll ask if Rob or Clay have anything to add.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. I don't have anything to add that hasn't already been said, so in the interest of brevity, I'll just be quiet. Thank you.
The same here. Really appreciate being here this evening. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks. And unless you have questions, we'll exit, so you can take public comment.
Questions from the commission for the applicant, or after hearing from the applicant, questions for our staff?
Well, I have a, a question. And please take this in the spirit that is meant. Why in the heck are you here? Just to get a blessing that you're consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Well, no, you, you would be actually rezoning the property and taking the recommendation.
Okay, so it's a rezoning. Why didn't it go to the BZA?
The rezoning is vested in the county commission's jurisdiction.
Okay, so we actually have some power over zoning, and in, if I may say so, I don't have any problem with this request. I was just wondering how you got here, because I had all those years on the planning commission, and it seemed like anytime there was a zoning request, a rezoning, they went to the BZA. They threw it over the fence to us, and they said, "You got to approve it, because it's already been approved by the BZA." So anyway, I'm glad you're here to explain that, because I know you're very knowledgeable, almost as knowledgeable as Steve. So thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
That's great. And then procedurally, this has gone through the planning commission, and they have approved and recommended approval.
Unanimously, which is...
At the last meeting, unanimously.
Excellent. Any further questions for the applicant?
I don't have any.
Any questions for our staff?
Yeah.
Okay, like to hear a motion to open up the public comment?
I move, y'all gonna stay right there. They'll, they'll speak right there. I'll move a motion to open up a comment.
Okay. Motion by Stollper, second by Mood. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. We now have, are in public comment. This is our third round of public comments, so a little bit confusing if you're looking at the agenda. This is public comment on the rezoning, okay? We have a couple people who have signed up to speak on this rezoning request. First, Mr. David Tab, is he still here?
I think he said he had cleared.
Second is Eric Lewis. So Lewis here.
I'll refer to the email that I sent.
Okay. The email said this was a really good idea, and thumbs up.
All right.
Brevity is a soul of mine.
How rare is that? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I'll move a motion to close public comment.
By Stollper, second by Mood. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that's unanimous. We're now out of public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move a motion. It, it sounds like this property has been on our comprehensive plan, future of land use map for commercial for 20-plus years, 30-plus years, maybe. I'd like to get a move of motion to find that it is consistent with the 24, 2045 comprehensive plan and, and approve the zoning request as submitted.
Second. Moved by Stollper, seconded by Mood, discussion. Hearing none. Let's vote. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice presentation.
Appreciate the new digs. It's, they're, they're really nice.
All right, thanks.
Good presentation.
Terrific. And thank you, staff, for their report. And now that you're back, thank you to the planning commission for prepping us. Terrific. Next on our agenda, Mr. Roger Goodwin, Director of Engineering, Planning, and Zoning.
Evening, commission. Hopefully, this will be quick and painless.
Okay.
I'm here for two bond releases, and let's see. First one is, we're seeking a complete release of $368,109 from the construction bond for Belair Homes LLC, Belair Phase 1, file number 02-36. This project is located at the intersection of Old Country Club Road and Belair Manor Drive in Harper's Ferry, West Virginia, 25414. This project appears to be 100% complete.
100% complete. Is there a motion from the commission?
So move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by commission, have a state discussion on approval of this 100% complete bond release. Hearing none. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Next.
We are seeking a complete release of $905,157 from the construction bond for Belair Homes LLC, Belair Phase 4A, file number 19-16-SD. This project is located at the intersection of Old Country Club Road and Belair Manor Drive in Harper's Ferry, West Virginia, 25414. The project appears to be 100% complete.
Okay, also 100% complete. Is there a motion to approve the bond release?
Yes.
Moved by commission, moved, seconded by commission, have a state discussion. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Great, thank you. May I approach to have these signed?
Yes. Shall we start with the rezoning request for Cochran Properties' presentation, or are you doing that at local level? That's Luke. Luke, why don't you get started while I sign these?
Not a problem. So as we just finished or approved that last rezoning, this is now the first step in another rezoning. There's a request before you now for the foresees of West Virginia LLC Cochran Zoning Map Amendment. At this point, this is not a public hearing. The purpose of this agenda item now is to schedule a public hearing to come before you following, and the extension of this is, it also needs to be forwarded to the planning commission for them to review and determine if it is within conformance of the 2045 comprehensive plan. So it is just now to schedule that public hearing, the next planning commission meeting, and it will be on the planning commission agenda for August 12th. So it does, by state code, need to be seen, or it's a public hearing before. The county commission needs to be within the next 60 days, so that leaves two dates, August 21st or September 4th.
Okay, we are on page 71. I'm sorry. Can I stop or go ahead, please?
I'm sorry. Does the applicant have the preference for the 21st or the 4th?
I believe the applicant has requested August 21st. That meets all notice requirements. It will be slightly easier on staff for September 4th, but frankly, either will work.
Okay, all right. Time, time is money, right? So I'll move a motion to have the public, uh, public hearing on the county commission's agenda on August 21st, a time to be determined, to be determined by our staff.
So motion from Commissioner Stollper.
Second.
Seconded by commission, have a state discussion. Mr. Cochran, do we need to move to refer the application to the planning commission for consistency with the comprehensive plan? I was asking, do we need to also move to refer the application to the planning commission for consistency with the comprehensive plan? Or is there a motion?
Yes, the, the planning commission has to make that determination and then send it back to you. This is the beginning of the process that we just went through, the ending of the previous applicant.
Is Mr. Stollper's, excuse me, is Commissioner Stollper's motion sufficient, or do we need to amend it?
If, I think that you should probably say something about the comprehensive plan reviewed by the planning commission for purposes of finding sufficiency with the comprehensive.
All right, I will, I will reword my, thank you, sir. I will reword my motion to have the public hearing at the county commission on August 21st at a time to be determined by our staff, and to send this application to the planning commission to determine, to, to, to be determined if it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Second.
There we go.
That's sufficient. Okay, it's been moved, seconded, just further discussion on this two-part motion. Hearing none. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you so much. Agenda item number three.
Commissioner Margie, I don't know if I should say anything here, but I just want to make it clear that I have no connection with this group or anything like that.
Oh, Cochran, yeah, got it.
Just so public doesn't become confused about.
No, I appreciate that. We should, probably should have asked.
You're, you're, you know, your day business, and you run a development.
That's right. Jokes, joking around. Okay. Agenda item number three, Jefferson County Development Authority, next steps, and, no, just next steps. 3.1, we have a couple resolutions. One, vision for Jefferson County Development Authority, pretty non-controversial stuff and stuff we've been talking about, but just putting it out there for public consumption and also for discussion here today. And then the second is, actually, the second one, you have seen this before. We brought this before the county commission a couple months ago, and then the next day after the agenda came out, a bill was introduced in the legislature, and there was confusion. It seemed, the, the timing was such, it seemed as if the resolution was timed to endorse a bill, but that was just happenstance. So we're bringing it back in a different context to make clear this is just about partnership with the state on development. The first resolution to set a vision for Jefferson County Development Authority, two ideas here. One, we want large commercial development, especially tourism, top priority being a sports complex. The second idea is we want to work with the state. So we have two different resolutions. I'll read off the first one, then we'll open up for discussion. Whereas Jefferson County Development Authority's mission is to attract, retain, and grow businesses in Jefferson County, and whereas Jefferson County is growing and will continue to grow, without intentional and focused recruitment of new businesses, growth in Jefferson County will be imbalanced toward residential. Jefferson County needs balanced growth so that we are a community where people want to live, work, and play. We do not want to be a bedroom community where people merely reside while commuting elsewhere for work and spending their hard-earned dollars outside the county. I've heard you talk about that a lot, Commissioner Mood. Whereas Jefferson County is growing and will continue to grow, without intentional and I've heard you talk about that a lot, Commissioner Mood. Whereas Jefferson County leads West Virginia in tourism, bringing $876 million in tourism-related spending for our economy... Excuse me. Our economy. Tourism-related industries are a natural strength for business development and a cornerstone for a diversified commercial tax base. And whereas the Jefferson County Commission is reconstituting the board of the Jefferson County Development Authority under the new state law that took effect July 11th, 2025, therefore being resolved by the Jefferson County Commission that, one, Jefferson County hereby expresses its support for recruiting large commercial enterprises to the county to achieve balanced growth and to diversify our tax base. Two, tourism is our strength and should be the focus of business recruitment efforts. In particular, a sports complex and convention center should be the top priority for the JCPA. Agri-tourism should be a second priority, collaborating with the Agri-tourism Task Force. Three, tax increment financing, also known as TIF, and payment in lieu of taxes, also known as pilot agreements, are powerful economic development tools for attracting investment in new businesses in Jefferson County and should be applied by the Jefferson County Development Authority. And finally, this is designed to just bring a little bit of focus. Jefferson County Development Authority should focus on its mission to attract, retain, and grow businesses in Jefferson County. Development authorities are limited in scope. They do not engage in planning, zoning, natural resource protection, public health, historic preservation, or delivery of public utilities. Jefferson County and the state of West Virginia have other agencies that govern these and other essential activities. Jefferson County Development Authority should liaise with those agencies as needed while focusing on its mission to attract, retain, and grow a diversified commercial tax base for Jefferson County. The idea there is, when you're bringing in development, there's all these questions that come up. What about water? What about historic preservation? What about public health? What about planning? What about zoning? Should we do this? Should we do that? The JCPA is about bringing in new businesses. That's what the focus is, and that's what that paragraph is about. Let's open it up for discussion. Thoughts? Comments?
Now, I'll just add that you, in this resolution, it talks about balance, and we certainly do need a balance here in Jefferson County. You know, wherever you drive, you see rooftops. With these rooftops, they require a lot of services. To my left is our sheriff. He's getting more calls a day and every week and every month. And the rooftops do not pay for the services that it provides. We need more businesses to locate here. That is, that they are our revenue generators for the services that we provide to the residents. I love the fact that the balance is mentioned in this resolution because we definitely need a more balanced approach. We have 57% of our residents that commute outside of the county for work. It'd be great if we could reduce that, even if we got down in the 40-range somewhere. That would be a great thing for Jefferson County. You wouldn't have as many people on the roads. You wouldn't have the congestion on 340 Bridge and Harpers Ferry. And you would have more families that would want to probably volunteer for your afternoon activities with their children, being, you know, coach, or they'll have time. They're not going to be in traffic for two hours every evening. They're here. They get off work at 5:00. They're home at 5:15. So, love the resolution. Thank you for bringing it forward.
I do as well. The resolution is talking about things. We have all talked about the growth that we need in this county. We've got to bring business to this county to help build a tax base. Pilots and TIFs, they're just one part of a tool. That's not a complete tax break. Yeah, but that is some incentives to bring business here, and I think this is heading in the right direction.
And from a planning perspective, we have a lot of thousands of acres in our county that have the entitlements for either high-density residential and RGRLIC, general commercial, other zones. They can go in two directions. They are entitled to go in a commercial direction to create business, which gives a higher tax rate to our county and gives services, healthcare, retail, things that we need in our county, or we can have more homes. So if we prioritize a commercial growth in this county, we can balance out the top-heavy residential sector that we have currently.
Could you explain that part again about residences coming because of planning? About how things have already been zoned for residential and recruit businesses?
Yeah, so...
It seems, it sounds to me as if there's almost, if I can use the word liberally, it defaults to residential.
It is. So, part of JCPA's mission is to try to bring businesses here, and we have properties that are zoned that could go in that direction, but they're defaulting to residential because we're not meeting... We have the ability to meet more businesses at the door, and we need to prioritize that because we have currently at our door residential developers, and we need to diversify that out.
Yeah, we can't force anybody to do anything, but if we can recruit businesses, we can then talk to landowners who want to sell, who already, they already have decided they want to sell their land. If they want to sell it, we can recruit a business to talk to them rather than go into residential. In the long run, that's better for the county because it gives us the balanced growth. It balances out the tax base. It helps with quality of life. I got young kids. It gives, hopefully, we'll have some fun things for kids to do around here. Would that be nice?
And some of the things we need to do are recruit businesses that are 25 or more employees. Mom and pops are great. I own two of them. Yeah, they... We employ seven people between the two. That's great, but what we need to do is focus on larger business so that we can try to keep residents here in this county working. That helps improve their quality of life, and it makes things better for them as a whole in this county.
No, I agree with Mr.
I'd like to weigh in on this, and I think generally, this is a good vision. But my question is, when you get down and you start talking about TIFs and pilots, I want to make it clear, or can you make it clear, that we're not saying anybody that applies for a TIF or a pilot is going to get it. I want them weighed on the individual application and not a blanket.
Well, this is not a blanket TIF or pilot. If it's a TIF or pilot, it has to come before this body.
Okay. I want to make sure to people, because I've heard some chatter about this.
Yeah.
And I was kind of surprised. I didn't think that's what it said. I just want to make sure publicly that we're not giving any blanket approvals to TIFs or pilot. They would come before us individually and be voted on based on their merits.
I think it's a really important clarification. We have part three here. I'm going to read it all, and I'm going to suggest that tax increment financing and payment in lieu of taxes, pilot agreements, are powerful economic tools for attracting investment in new business in Jefferson County and should be applied as appropriate?
Yes, I like that.
No, that would be good. That'd be good.
Does that work? All right. As amended, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
To move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mood, seconded by Commissioner Stalper. With that amendment on part three, thank you, Commissioner Hefest, adding the phrase "as appropriate." Any further discussion on the first amendment, on the first resolution? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have a second one. Can I read this one off? We already read through it a couple months ago, but I can read it again. What do you think? I'm not going to read it. Well, I'll read it off.
Read it. You read it.
To establish a Jefferson County First Economic Development Partnership with Governor Morrissey and the state of West Virginia. Whereas on February 12th, 2025, Governor Patrick Morrissey delivered the State of the State address to a joint session of the West Virginia legislature. And whereas in the State of the State address, Governor Morrissey identified economic development priorities for the state of West Virginia. And whereas Jefferson County is a rapidly growing county situated in close proximity to both Virginia and Maryland as well as the District of Columbia. And whereas Jefferson County is acutely aware of the need for competitiveness with other governments and out-of-state markets due to its close proximity to other states. And whereas Jefferson County leads West Virginia in tourism, bringing $876 million in tourism-related spending for our economy. And whereas the Jefferson County Commission has resolved to establish a Jefferson County First Economic Development Strategy, therefore being resolved by the Jefferson County Commission, that, one, Jefferson County hereby expresses its support for the economic development priorities initiatives of Governor Morrissey and the state of West Virginia. And, two, Jefferson County expresses its desire and intent to enter a collaborative partnership with Governor Morrissey's administration, including the West Virginia Economic Development Authority, to advance the shared economic development goals of Jefferson County and the state of West Virginia. And, three, the state of West Virginia leads many interstate economic development initiatives and negotiates agreements on behalf of our citizens. And, four, the partnership between Jefferson County and the state of West Virginia should prioritize the economic development of Jefferson County first, including benefits to county residents and businesses. Thoughts?
Very well. I'll move a motion to approve.
It's a motion by Commissioner Stalper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mood. Discussion.
Have we got any feedback from the governor's office on this?
On this specific resolution?
Yeah.
No, we have not. I hope this will be an entree into further discussions with the state economic development.
Okay, this is a friendly opening shot.
Exactly.
Okay, I want to make that clear, and that the governor has not implicitly agreed to this yet.
Right.
This sounds like something the governor would definitely be in for, but I just want to make sure that our public knows that the governor has not already agreed with this.
Another important clarification. Thank you, Commissioner Hefest. We don't want to speak on behalf of the governor's office.
Well, like I said, I run into the governor frequently, and he doesn't hold back when telling me where he thinks the county commission is off.
Okay.
So I think clarification is good.
Good.
Because I want to keep the governor happy.
Yes.
And so, okay, thank you for that.
Yes, and they have immense resources there. We have a JCPA, and it's a great organization that we have here, but the state one has, it's even bigger. And if we can leverage their resources and their connections to further development in accord with what we just passed, our previous resolution, that helps us out. And by the way, I'll just note, for those who don't know, Governor Morrissey is from Harpers Ferry. So I'd like to think he's going to favor some of these projects and help us out a little bit.
I have a friendly amendment.
Yes.
For number four, it reads, "The partnership between Jefferson County and the state of West Virginia should prioritize the economic development of Jefferson County first, including benefits to county residents and businesses." I would like to change "including" to "primarily" or something along that line.
And the objection from the...
I don't have any objections, Stalper.
Mover and the seconder both agreed to that, so it's going to be changed from "including" to "primarily."
I will agree to that amendment and move a motion with the amendment.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Excellent edits. Moving on, we have Sheriff Hanson.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. We're on page 88.
First of all, it's time to renew the governor's Highway Safety Grant for this year.
Sheriff, how?
It's time to renew the governor's Highway Safety Grant for this year. This is an overtime reimbursement grant for traffic patrols, where we act as the fiduciary for half of the region, and the state reimburses us for those payments. This year, we are anticipating dedicating $309,600 for us for those reimbursements. We're seeking authorization to submit application and for the president to sign the associated documents.
Sheriff, we'd like to hear such a motion.
I move to approve the application for the governor's Highway Safety Grant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Stalper, seconded by Commissioner Mood. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Sheriff. And... It's perfect. Do you all sign that?
I agree with that.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to skip ahead to revisiting the home confinement issue. As you're aware, this county commission program, this is a county commission program that's been designated to the sheriff's office to oversee, which offers an alternative to being put in jail. Since this issue was first brought, we are absorbing Earl Gill's salary in our budget and paying half of CAC out of the bailiffs, which the other half out of our part-time employee line. After getting called out five times and revoking four individuals over the July 4th weekend, they are still monitoring 50 people 24/7. The courts are sometimes sentencing people directly to home confinement without notice, but typically, there are needs to be background conducted, home checks, and suitability reports completed all prior to being placed on home confinement. Then they need to do a home visit to continue effectively monitoring these inmates, which is what they are. They have to process invoices, respond to messages, request to leave outside of the dedicated times, and monitor the reports from each device to ensure there are no one is in violation. Additionally, they are performing between 100 and 150 DNA tests annually and 200 drug tests. They are completing all this to their best ability with 1.5 people, which is nowhere near the approximate ratio. Vacations and illness greatly impact services being provided and the part-time employee's ability to work the entire year. Due to the amount of individuals in home confinement and levels of callouts that have been happening on nights and weekends, Kathleen O'Connor, which I called Kat, will be out of hours and unable to work in November and December, leaving one person to carry the load alone. We are looking to find an immediate relief, making Kathleen O'Connor full-time at her current bailiff's rate of 1950, and Earl Gill is technically the senior supervisor, and we would like to increase his hourly rate to $21 an hour. At this time, Chief Jones, my chief bailiff, would like, still need Kat to work as a bailiff because she's short manpower. But we could absorb the additional cost of salaries for now through reimbursements from the home confinement account that has amassed a balance of approximately $41,000 since we've stopped taking their full salaries from that account. We need to get these employees some sort of assistance until they can sit, we can all sit down at a table and figure out what is the answer and how to fund it. We believe that showing them that they are valued and making Kat a full-time employee will help. Turning to the handouts I handed to all of you. Based upon the current costs of numbers of inmates and proposed salaries, the annual cost would be $151,511.30, meaning the daily rate of $8.03. The current jail rate is $45.97, and I believe it's about to go up to $68, meaning that if this program does not exist, these individuals will be sent to jail, and the annual jail bill will increase by $838,000. Actually, almost $839,000. The program affords the county and therefore the citizens of Jefferson a savings of $687,441.20. Therefore, I'm requesting that we form a committee to take a harder look at home confinement program and its funding, but in the meantime, I'm requesting immediate relief by honoring the request to make Kathleen O'Connor a full-time 80-hour employee at 1950 an hour and increase Earl Gill's salary to $21 an hour.
Terrific. Thank you so much, Sheriff. Generally speaking, our approach is that we give deference to all elected officials and on their hiring and how they run their departments, and we just ask that everything fits within the budget. So I just received this a couple of minutes ago. So, Mr. Bound, did you have a chance to look at this in advance of the meeting, and do you have any comments on whether or not it's within budget?
Thank you, Mr. Stalper. Yeah, I did look at end-of-year balances in the bailiffs full-time. There's plenty to cover those two, that increase in hiring Kat full-time, and also in the circuit court bailiffs. So they are under your, you know, under your vision, so...
Yes.
Yeah, the funds are there if you need them.
Okay.
To advise the commission. The funds are there.
So this is within budget?
It is.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Questions from the commission?
No, I don't have any questions. You answer by question.
Yeah, the increase in total is like $27,227, increasing someone twice and then adding another $3.34 per hour.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. And to add on to Commissioner Mochi's comment, you know, we set the budget for our electeds in, in the winter time. The budget starts July 1st. We basically give the departments or electeds, call it a box of money, you can move it around however you want to.
I understand, and what I really reflect is that this is your program, not mine. I'm just overseeing it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for doing that.
You're doing a good job.
Yeah, this is a terrific program. If, when folks are enrolled in this program, they can see their families.
Sorry, sir.
They can see their families, they can maintain a job, they can be part of society, and they don't have to be in jail. In, in most cases, as long as the judge thinks that's the right thing to do, I think that's a good thing.
They don't need to be in the Martin'sburg Hilton. Lastly, I'm requesting an executive session to discuss a legal issue regarding a former employee.
Before we do that, is there a motion to approve the proposed?
I shall move.
You beat you. Commissioner Hefestay, move to approve. Seconded by Commissioner Moot. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Next, Sheriff. We're gonna, you were gonna talk about proposed gentleman? Now, closed session?
One of the nice things is now we leave and you guys get to stay.
Okay, where are we going?
All right, folks, you get to stay in the room, you don't have to go to the hallway.
We need a motion.
Yeah, all right, go ahead.
I'm moving to talk about personnel matter.
Hold on, we're back recording.
Commissioner Mochi, I'm sorry, we have a couple of other items that require executive session. Do you want to do them all at the same time?
We can.
Fine by me. Any objections from the commission?
Are you okay, are you okay staying?
I guess I am.
We can do his first, but I, I'm just saying.
So when I make the motion to go to executive session, I'm gonna hit him for all.
That's, that's what I was.
Yeah, okay. That's what's what you're saying.
Sheriff's office is even bigger now. And the sheriff gets to go first.
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
So 4.2 for the sheriff, which ones do you have, counsel?
7.1, 7.2, and 7.3, I guess all three.
All right.
And 8.2.
8.2? All right, I move, I move that we go to executive session to receive legal advice and also to talk about contractual matters under, the gen items are 4.2, 7.1, 7.2, excuse me, 4.2, 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, and 8.2. Second. Moved by Commissioner Stollper. Seconded by Commissioner Hefestay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, we're going to executive session. Don't trip over our board. We're being creative.
Reporting in progress.
Were you convening Commissioner Hefestay?
I'd like to make a motion that we come out of executive session.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Moot. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We are back in regular session. Do you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move a motion that we are in favor of the Purdue bankruptcy settlement plan.
Motion by Commissioner Stollper. Seconded by Commissioner Keys. Any, was that appropriately phrased? Mr. Cochran, I'm seeing a yes. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We shall move on with our agenda. We're now on item five.
Checking the questions.
Is there any discussion? No, but is that on?
It was Purdue, it's a pharmacy issue, pharmacy settlement stuff.
The opioid.
Opioid stuff.
The opioid bill?
It's under.
We will have our.
It's under 7.1.
We will have our staff make sure that the motion that was approved is spelled out and communicated to the county clerk. Thank you. Our next gen item is Resolution West Virginia Goes Purple. Commission move?
Yeah, so September is National Recovery Month. I'd like to look at doing a resolution for Jefferson County Goes Purple. Whereas National Recovery Month is observed every September to promote awareness of substance use disorder, encourage treatment and recovery, and celebrate resilience of individuals and families affected by addiction. And whereas Jefferson County remains committed to supporting community members struggling with substance use through effective, accessible services, evidence-based programs, and whereas the county recognizes the longstanding importance of day report centers in offering non-incarceration alternatives, supporting individuals in recovery, and promoting accountability through supervised treatment and case management. And whereas, following the closure of the nonprofit provider, the Jefferson County Commission is moving forward with establishing a county-operated day report program to ensure uninterrupted service to justice-involved individuals struggling with substance abuse, substance use. And whereas the commission dedicated reflects, dedication reflects, I'm getting tongue-tied there, a belief every resident facing addiction deserves opportunity to recover, rebuild, and contribute positively towards our community. Whereas this effort builds on county's broader commitment to justice reform, public health, and compassionate local-driven solutions, and strengthen individuals and families. Now therefore, we, the Jefferson County Commission, to hereby designate September 25 as Jefferson County Goes Purple Month. We call on residents, business owners, organizations to join us in supporting these efforts and helping in the recovery drive.
Very glad you brought this up. This is an issue that is incredibly important to our county and really to our state and our nation. Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing this to us. Do you want to call our folks to make a presentation, or do we want to just?
Sure, I'm more happy to call Nick to presentation.
Please.
Want to come up?
We'd love to hear from you. We have a witness table here, the microphone is on at that center chair, and if you could tell us a little bit more about this, because this is very important to our community and we're so grateful for your time.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Tara Mason, and I am the founder and executive director for the Hope Dealer Project, which was established in 2015 with the mission to offer hope, resources, and recovery support to individuals and family impacted by substance use disorder. In 2023, we launched a statewide movement with the goal of reaching all 55 counties during National Recovery Month. West Virginia has made history by becoming the first state in the nation to go purple during National Recovery Month. This campaign is more than a color, it's a commitment. When the county goes purple, it means that the community is taking a visible stand to support of prevention, recovery, and awareness efforts surrounding addiction and mental health. Our mission is simple, yet powerful, to shine a light on recovery, end stigma, and ensure that families know that they are not alone. We're not asking for funds, we're simply here asking for support and partnership. When your county participates, it says loud and clear, recovery matters here, we care and we see you. We invite you to join us by issuing this proclamation recognizing September as National Recovery Month and participating in the West Virginia Goes Purple Initiative. In closing, I want to leave you with this. Jefferson County, we see you. Thank you for turning on the purple light. Together, we will show the nation what it means to be Mount New York Strong, and soon we're going to change the narrative. No longer will West Virginia be known as the state with the highest overdose rate. We will be known as the state that has led the way to recovery. Thank you.
Very well said. That was beautiful. Thank you. Very inspiring.
So I'm happy to make the motion for Jefferson County Goes Purple for the month of September.
Second. By Commissioner Moot and seconded by Commissioner Keys.
And a lot of people don't really understand those of addiction. I lost one of my foster kids, one of my employees, didn't really understand a lot of the recovery. One of my customers works with people in recovery. I don't usually talk things like that with customers or politics, and him and I had very long discussion about it, and it really gives you a different understanding when you see the direction and the help that they're trying to give people.
Exactly.
I'm almost 34, and when I was in high school, was in the mid to late 2000s, and that's when the opioid epidemic really started to spiral, and I have three really good friends that passed away from opioid, so I wish I knew, so.
I'm sorry.
No, it's just, it is a thing.
Yeah, I lost a distant relative.
Yeah.
And it's, it's gut-wrenching to lose anybody when it could have been prevented, so I would like to make a comment about this resolution, this excellent resolution, that the signature box is be expanded to include all of the county commissioners.
That's fair enough. Terrific idea. Without objection, we'll make that edit. And is that something that we could do? We may not be able to do that tonight, but if.
Is there any chance that Lynn had a copy available that we could sign with all the signature blocks?
We'll expand it and get done, and Eddie will advise on how to practically get it.
If you could at least sign, or if we could get a picture with Tara and her crew and you if you decide to pass this resolution, like you might, just to move forward on that, and then we'll get actual signatures and get that back to Tara and record it.
That work for you all? Does that sound right? Great. There's a motion, there's a second, is there further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you so much for being here. If you would join us for a photo to commemorate the passing of this resolution, we appreciate you.
So I'm going to take a few slides. I'm looking back at the. Do you want to hold the paper solution? And then we'll sign it on the next one. No, we put it on there for you. Jack talked to me about it, and I said, could you just do one also with everybody's name on it? It's regular. So we'll have you all come on over individually, I'm stealing your pen. Commissioner Mochi.
I knew it was going to be that.
So. We'll have you first to hold it, having everybody else see the signature then. Five, and snap that one 17 years. Okay. You all up here too. Thank you. Thank you. We wanted to get a new shirt for this. No, I do want to. Hey, Jackie, can we grab you for your signature?
I love it when we can do it. Let me have a follow-up.
Ah, yeah, I was like, why are you telling us to not drink or something? For the photo. I get it.
In the future. We're not going to bless.
We survived the first time.
This is short for mine.
That's fine.
What am I going to?
Thank you, we never gavelled out, so we can just keep on moving. Next on our agenda, we have agenda item number six, Jessica James, Chief Human Resources Officer, scheduled for 8:35, only off by a couple hours. Is Jessica available now, or? Terrific. Lynn, we might be able to save everybody some time. It is late in the evening. Can I just ask, are these budget neutral? Are these within budget? They are? If the commission is okay with it, we're on page 92, the chair would love to hear a motion to approve these hires as presented.
I move.
Seconded by Commissioner Moot, seconded by Commissioner Hefestay. Do we want to discuss these? We've never voted no on a hire.
Sounds good.
There are wonderful parts of process, I'm sure, and.
Mm-hmm. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to agenda item number seven, David Bound, Chief Financial Officer, that's on page 94.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. I just have another budget-neutral item to present is request to adjust the various departments' fiscal year 25 budget accounts as presented with fiscal year 2513 internal budget revision. Amounts are one-for-one, so it's budget-neutral. What is?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Stollper, seconded by Commissioner Keys. Is there any discussion? Internal budget transfers were balanced in the books end of the year, nothing substantial. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Next on our agenda, Mr. Cochran's on page 100. Do we have any remaining? We do not.
I do have.
Oh, I'm sorry. 6.2.
Yes, ambulance fees exonerations.
So I'll move to approve. Motion by Commissioner Stollper.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Moot. Any discussion on exonerations for ambulance fee bill adjustments?
David, I think you have. Yeah, there are some, there's some discussions, there's some large amounts. What was told was that Realtor was advised that they did not owe, and that one went unbilled. So on the go-forward, I request that J C, J C E S A note that when they do have an exoneration, that they're billing the current year customer, that at seven, whoever owns that property, at July 1st of the year. Because that's not noted on here, and that's one thing I questioned, so. But the concern was, there's, you know, a lot of money that's available to be put out, that's, the bills to be put out by the end of this year, so this didn't get rebuilt, but I'll have that department build these, the current customer. but I'll have that, that department build these, the current customer. It's not vacant land, there are some vacant lands that got exonerated or double billing, things of that nature. But there are, there was some money left on the table, I want to make sure we get that.
Do you have questions from the commission? There are no questions, there's a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that's unanimous. Next on the agenda, Mr. Cochran, do you have any more business? No? Ms. Benitez?
So the only thing left really is this building, the update to the building. You are now officially in this building. You have an order drafted at the last meeting, putting us here as a courthouse annex. Your first meeting in here, and in order to get here over the last couple weeks, since Saturday, we got internet on Saturday, so we did internet, wifi, router switchers, firewall. We had IT in here to run all of the IT things partway into the building. We haven't gotten very far, the AV. To have, none of these TVs worked, just to let you know. The projector did not work, no microphone worked on Saturday. And so in that amount of time, until 3 o'clock today, all of that happened. No tables were in here, no, no table was on the stage. That all happened in the last couple days. Still, there's more AV work to be done because our next exciting thing is ribbon cutting on the 26.
Terrific.
So not this Saturday, but next Saturday. That's where you'll be able to go beyond the ropes that have prevented everyone today. Everyone is very excited to go into the building, but they will actually be able to explore the entire building here and the entire building next door, which is the future of the courts. So that starts at 2 o'clock with the outside vendor fair. There are a variety of vendors, and Mobile Rec is outside, so please bring all of the family to enjoy the outside. There'll be official ribbon cutting. We're very excited that Captain Jack will be christening the building in true West Virginia style with a bottle of moonshine. And then there will be a scavenger hunt through each of the buildings where you will hopefully meet many of the elected and staff, so you can find out where they will be and speak to them about their vision for their office spaces. And then, don't let the kids know, but the end of the scavenger hunt is this room. And it is for a family movie night for, I always say this wrong, Manoa, Manawa? Manoa 2.
Moana.
Moana 2. And so, and that movie is put on by Parks and Rec in this room. So now you see these tables, now you see these chairs, they're all going to be pushed back. It's going to be picnic-style popcorn, and you can bring in your food from your outside, from the food truck vendors outside, and we really want people to enjoy the space. So that starts not this Saturday, but next Saturday at 2 o'clock. And bring the family, bring your friends.
Well, Eddie, I would like to thank you, our staff, and our vendors for making this happen. You all have been in here, the entire process has been incredible. And in the past week or so, just getting everything ready, that's just amazing.
Lynn, you too back there, you're amazing.
And Laura Kuhn, who will be listening at some point, let's give her a special thank you. Well said, Commissioner Mood, Commissioner Keys, I echo that.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Our professional staff is just absolutely amazing. Kudos.
Yeah, this is a big push, and I know we're trying to get it closed. Now trying to get it, the building open to the public is a big push. So I, I know our staff was stressed out by making this happen in, in hope that you know that, you know that we really love you and respect you and all your hard work that you have gone into this building and making this happen. So take the rest of the week off.
Eddie, for this, Eddie.
After tomorrow.
Oh, I was.
After tomorrow.
Nothing more from the county administrator, we have reached the end of our agenda.
Oh, darn.
With no further business, we urge her.